Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for being here. We do have a little bit of a crowd today and very handsome looking crowd, I must say.
Handsome, yes. Um, I don't see anything handsome. I see some lovely ladies, but I don't see any handsome.
Oh, my goodness. I should have hit him with.
Oh, Yama came. He's handsome.
Yeah, no, no.
My mother thought Dan Yama was the most handsome person in the world. Whenever, whenever Dan came around, my mother would just whisper to me, there's Dan. She'd say, he's so handsome.
He's embarrassing.
Honest, honest to God, is that true?
His mother was the classiest lady.
She loved Dan Yama.
She loved him.
Thanks.
Do you want to address anything to that effect?
Are you saying we're all ugly? No.
All right. This is Mahoney County Commissioners Hearing Room, regular meeting number 12, Thursday, March 24th, slightly after 10:00. And we will have public comments. Anyone? It goes dead quiet. Anyone online? No. Okay. Hearing nonapproval of the previous minutes board meeting number 11, Thursday, March 17th, 2022, and approval of bills for payment to have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Advertisement for bids, one and two, engineers, Pat.
Morning, everybody. Items one or one and two are both bids for roadway culverts. One is the Luffingwell Road Culvert and item two is the Lipkey Road Culvert Replacement.
Okay, thank you. Advertisement for bids, one and two, motion.
Motion to approve advertisement for bids. Second.
Rule call.
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes. Journal entries.
Yes.
Yes.
Traficant?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said yes.
No, sorry.
Okay. Number one, journal entries. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve journal entries, number one. Second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, agreements A through G. JJC?
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with biometric management information for fingerprint machine in the detention center and the amount of $1,600 general fund.
Okay, thank you. B and C Recycling.
With the pointers, Commissioners. Item B is our agreement with District Board of Health. They're going to provide inspections and enforcement to landfills, compost facilities, tire recovery facilities here in Mahoney County. They're also going to be performing some groundwater monitoring for all homes that are within mile radius of closed or operating landfills. Item C is, this is really positive for us. This is going to be the first step of several to create a large scale composting program here in Mahoney County. Once we collect that compost and create it, we're going to be growing things in the greenhouse and that's where Jeff Magada and Flying High comes in on that with that program. But we're looking to do full circle to collect a food waste, create compost, plant material and get it out there. And Jeff, do you want to talk a little bit about the program?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Lou. I want to express my gratitude to the Commissioners and the Green Team for allowing us to be part of that project there. The greenhouse will be an additional resource for us to do vegetable production and also flower production that will leverage what we are doing at the campus of care. And so we have a tremendous need for getting fresh produce into people's hands throughout Mahoney County. And so this is another growing space for us to do that. So, thank you.
Excited about that.
Jeff, is there an opportunity to collect the rainwater off of any of the buildings there that we can direct towards the greenhouse?
Yeah, I think we talked about it. I think it's, nothing is there now, Commissioner Ditster, but we are, I think that's a future task.
Yeah, that'd be a good question for us to add on to.
Excited about that. Then in the summer, you could have, I mean, in the winter, around Christmas, you could sell pointsettes like they used to do there with the garden club?
Yes. Yes.
I'll make money.
Yes. Dan, I'll continue my, my avenue of embarrassing the gentleman in the audience, Jeff Magada, one of the finest baseball players ever come out of the area.
Well, I appreciate that. That was my hope one day.
Yeah.
Reality was different.
Well, you have a, you have a better mission right now.
Right, that's true.
Thank you.
D and E, sanitary, Pat. Tara?
Commissioners, letter D is an agreement with B and R for maintenance inspection and repairs to our Evoqua brand chlorine equipment. This is at various locations in the estimated amount of $5,000. These are non-general funds. And letter E is modification number two with CT Consultants to provide professional engineering services at the Camel Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is for the grit replacement, which is improvement number 522 in the amount of $31,300, and this is also non-general funds.
Thanks, Pat and Tara. F and G, Danny?
Okay, yes, good morning again, everyone. The first one is Nesco Resources, the former Calus Temporary Services. So I've done this the last few years where I entered into an agreement with them for temporary seasonal help during tax collection. It works out very well for any of you that are looking for temps, since it really does work out well. They do the testing. And, you know, the drug testing, the background check, they do all that. So, you know, we, I interview the people and bring them on and they send me an invoice. I mean, it works out real well. Some of the people I brought back more than once, which is very helpful because they already know what, what to do and
Good.
And so it works out well. The second, my second one, Invoice Cloud is a, is going to be our new vendor for electronic payments and bill presentation, tax bill presentation. This company is offering, we're going to be able to offer our taxpayers a much wider variety of electronic payment methods than we do now. For right now, they can pay online or, or by phone using a credit card or from their bank account. This is going to allow us to go into the PayPal world, Venmo. We're going to be able to set up automatic deductions. You know, we have a lot of people that pay monthly and they're always asking us, can, can I just have this withdrawn monthly? You know, like the rest of the world does. We're going to be able to do this now. They're also going to be able to go online and do their tax bill at any time. We don't have that capability now. So this is really going to open up the amount of service in the electronic world to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Number two, agreements A through G. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve agreements A through G. Second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Ditster? Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Number three, change orders, A, Commissioners, O and B.
Commissioners, this is a change order number three with B and B Contractors and Developers, Inc. for additional work needed for the Mahoney County Board of Developmental Disabilities Office renovation project in the amount of $5,065.91, and it is non-general.
Thank you. Number three, change orders, A. Do we hear a motion?
Motion to approve change orders. Second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Number four, road closings, A, Engineers.
Commissioners, this is approval to close approximately 30 roads between March 28th and November 1st for various culvert replacements prior to the start of our OPWC paving and our locally funded paving programs.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Number four, road closings, A. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve road closings. Second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Number one, resolutions additions. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve resolutions additions. Second.
Rule call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Number two, resolutions A through E, Commissioners, O and B.
Commissioners, this is a rec- resolution declaring a necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil levitation and requesting certification from the county auditor from Mahoney County Children's Services renewal of an existing 0.5 mil levy, and Randy is here if he wants to speak.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. I've always appreciated your value of children's services and your recognition that communities thrive when children are safe and protected. A necessary component of that is the funding and a necessary component of that funding is this levy. This levy, and I know you're going to be asking the auditor to certify the exact amount, but historically, as this is a renewal, it brings in about 2.2 million, which represents about 12% of our total annual funding. So I would ask that you approve the necessity placing that on the ballot. It's up next year.
Thanks, Randy. And B, Engineers.
Commissioners, Commissioners, letter B is a resolution necessity to purchase hot mixed asphalt from five vendors throughout the state co-op purchasing program in excess of $50,000. The five plants are Lindy Paving, Tri-County Asphalt, Allied Corpus Two Plants, one in North Jackson and one in Canton, and Marzane, Inc. And letter C is a resolution of necessity to purchase two Ram 1500 Classic trucks with accessories from 72 Hour LLC doing business as National Auto Fleet Group. This is through Sourcewell in the estimated amount of $70,073.60. These are both non-general funds.
Okay, thank you. And D, jobs and family services, Rebecca.
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving the separation of an employee from Child Support Division effective June 15th, 2021.
Okay, thank you. And E, O and B Grants, Anna.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a resolution authorizing the commitment by the Commissioners to contribute $10,000 from the General Fund Administration to O S U extension for the benefit of the 4-H program.
Good program, Anna. Happy about that. Number two, resolutions A through E. Do you hear a motion?
Motion to approve resolutions. Second. Yes.
Commissioner Remilio Agati?
Yes. Yes.
All righty then, little discussion up here with you. As me in the middle as the referee. Now, I, I. Did you want to borrow this?
Hey, you know, for 10 years.
Marty, why don't you take him back up here, give him a nice welding equipment.
So Nancy will absolutely abuse me after I say this. So for 10 years, I say to Nancy, rotate the way you call the, the, the order of the Commissioners saying yes, no, whatever, you know? And she says, no, the chairperson, the president is last, the vice president is next to last, and the, and the Commissioners first. That's how it's always done. So today.
I just decided to.
Oh, so, so I'm, I'm happy to say that today is, it just proved it's not how it's always done.
And I'm wondering, how, what are you doing? I wasn't going to say anything and I'm like.
Oh, well, see, I get beat up all the time and they tell me, hey, that's the way it's done. Okay, all right.
Well, no, you never shut up about it though. You continue on.
You continue.
I don't throw water on anybody or anything, you know, so.
All righty then, okay, move on.
Motion to adjourn.
You know what? You never want to be at Marty's meetings because he rules with an iron fist.
All right. Does anybody want to say anything? Alan, how's your first couple weeks, week and a half, I should say?
It's been great.
Has it? You're learning a lot?
Yes.
Good, that's good. Wait for a couple months. Karen's just looking happy. Has the phone start running off the wall yet? Just checking.
Case new people are here, Alan is the new director of facilities.
I think most of them. Any electeds online? Pat, do you want to say anything that would give us some insight on the roads for the spring? Potholes, anything?
What potholes?
Well, how about the ones on your street that I've been trying to get patched?
Yeah, that's another story. Now, our, our biggest concern right now is just with the, the price of gasoline being as high as it is, it's affecting all of the construction costs. Asphalt's quite high compared to last year. Pipe is extremely high, not only in price, but there's concerns of being able to receive pipe because of the supply chain issues. So this is really putting us, ODOT, anyone in the, I guess, heavy highway construction and piping industries in a dilemma on, you know, how we're going to move forward because it's, it's really driving the price of everything extremely high, much, much higher than ever anticipated. So we've been keeping a close eye on basically every bid tab that goes out, whether it's ours, another county's, the states, just to try to track numbers so we can, we can plan accordingly.
Thanks, Pat. I mean, this is going to be an issue for everybody with the, the high cost, the gasoline tax, the gasoline. I mean, it's really, when you go to the gas pump, you look around and you say, oh, my God. You get 10, five gallons of gas for $30. That's, that's not a lot of gas and you're in there twice a week. So hopefully something will change in the next couple months. We'll see. Troy, do you have any news for us with your company and what's going on with?
I think 2021, 2022, we'll be continuing to do some grid modernization out there. We've got a project going on in Louisville where we're upgrading some of the distribution lines we're going through out there. We have a project going on from Riverbend Substation out to Salt Springs Substation. So we're doing some modernization there. As always, I will keep everybody in the communities, township, cities, villages engaged when those projects are impacting or affecting their communities. So.
And so they, they started to work on that Austin town problem as well as the, the upper part of the west side.
Yeah, so they've been working on that substation over there. Doing maintenance work out there. We had a mobile sub out there because of a failed transformer. But as Mr. Giannetti just said, supply chain issues are dictating some of our equipment getting in, but we're trying to make ready as much as possible. There's obviously some of the impact of a known numerous outages out there in the last three or four months. We believe that we've resolved some of the maintenance issues out there and some of the circuitry concerns that we've had. Unfortunately, Mother Nature comes in every once in a while. We had an issue last night over off of Turner and New. We had a broken cross arm caused by a downed tree. That's what took people out last night. So as always, our primary concern out here is to provide reliable power all the time. And at times, things happen. There is an impact. We're out there trying to maintain that. What I would ask of the community is, is when we have our linemen out there working, respect that safe space that they're in there. They're doing a job. That's dangerous work at all times, primarily when there's a lot of storms going on out there. They've got to take that into account too as they go to make those repairs. Depending on what kind of weather we're dealing with at the time, like last night, a lot of lightning, a lot of winds, so that into getting that service back online. But as always, I'm here and available for the Commissioners for any questions, concerns you may have.
Many updates, you know, that you have throughout the summers, spring and summer. I mean, you're welcome to come and give it to us.
Absolutely.
And then the media is usually here and they would then say that so that the people in the community, the residents in those areas know. Thanks, Troy.
I understand.
Anna?
Commissioners, I just wanted to thank you for, and remind you that in the onset of the pandemic, the Commissioners put forward $200,000 for PPE to supply people and persons throughout the county. Before the state actually had all the logistics in place for us to receive PPE through their channels, the Commissioners put forward $200,000 in general fund money. And we requested a public assistance reimbursement through FEMA for those funds, and we received those funds just this week. But they did, we did receive the reimbursement for those funds, so.
Good job to Anna because she had to go back and forth and back and forth and justify those funds and she never let it go. And she was determined to get those money. So I appreciate her hard work and bringing that into the count.
Great job, Anna.
You and Carol are a lot of like, just keep nagging until you get it done, you know?
That's right.
It's a good thing.
I liked to nag.
Persistence.
Persistence.
Yes, because they did not want to do the clean, all the cleaning we did in the building. They did not want to fund that. And she justified it and kept justifying and said, no, this is what it is and qualifies. And they finally said, yes.
Well, thank you.
Hey, when you follow the rules like they told you, they can't.
They can't say no.
You know, they can't say no as long as you justify it.
When I send them back the letter that they sent us saying it was covered, you guys wrote it. What are you going to do? So eventually they said, oh, yeah. I mean, up until 20, sometime in 2021, we got notification that they had finally agreed to their first statement. I'm like, okay, you know, we got the money.
That's one of the things that, and Commissioners, one of the things that we have done and the Commissioners have allowed us to do, working with Anna in the prosecutor's office. If we find something that is questionable, we do send that to the federal government or the state and say, is this allowable? So that now you have the documentation when they come back to us.
Yeah.
And so that kept us on all our audits from 2020, 21 with CARES Act funding and our money. We had no issues.
That's where you say, not, is it allowable? It is allowable.
It's kind of hard to say it is with federal government.
Let them come back and say, it's not, say, really? So you're not going to help the people in the valley?
Yeah, we'll do that.
You get more with sugar than vinegar.
Yeah.
Sometimes, sometimes. Lou, you have anything new to recycling?
We are going to be unveiling the plans of moving towards that permanent collection facility here in Mahoney County. It's going to offer a much more robust collection program for hard handle items such as electronics, supplies, tires. We're hoping to begin advertising that around the middle of May, beginning of June, and run a collection program throughout the summer instead of just one or two days like we've done in the past. So this is going to be really beneficial to the residents of Mahoney County, maybe to offload these items on a continuing basis as opposed to just a few occasions per year.
Okay.
Lou, while you're on that subject, I have a five gallon Home Depot bucket with a lid. Then when I pulled the engine out of my car a couple of months ago, I drained the antifreeze, the transmission fluid and the oil, and put it in this big five gallon tub. And it's been sitting there and I keep thinking, what can I do with this? I don't want to dump it in my yard or anything. Is that? I want to dump it down the drain.
The first week in May, we're going to have our, our hazardous waste collection out of the Camp Nou Fairgrounds. We are still going to continue that at the fairgrounds, at least for the next couple of years before we bring it into.
So that's what I should do with it? Take it to the hazardous ones?
Yes, yes. And we'll take it off your hands free like all residents. You don't have to dump it down the sewer there.
Don't even bring.
Well, you know, I'm real paranoid about antifreeze because my dog licks everything off the driveway that's down there. You know, and it'll kill him. One spoon of antifreeze will kill him. So, you know, I, I've, I've actually taken my dog because my old Camaro used to drip antifreeze. And I've actually taken my dog to the emergency vet twice, thinking he drank antifreeze, you know? So now it's like I'm neurotic about it. So.
You know what, Lou, you have a, a computer recycling as well?
Yeah.
What do you do with those? I mean, are those, could you repurpose those?
Some of it is repurposed. A lot of it is demanufactured and, and taken down to its four parts and then sold back out. You have the met, precious metals in there and sold back out to the markets. The, a lot of times, for example, they're not repurposed because the hard drives are destroyed. We want to give residents the comfort to know that when they bring the material to us, that we destroy the hard drives and they don't have to worry about that material going out in cyberspace. So a lot of that is, is gone. What can be repurposed a lot of times is, whether it be the, the memory, the RAM, any microprocessors, that kind of thing. But a lot of it is demanufactured and sold at its component parts.
Okay, because I was asked if, if we have computers that could be repurposed, of course, they'd have to be swiped for senior centers like throughout the city as well as the county and to use those to teach them how to use the computer at this, or have one at the senior centers.
I think any repurposing of the county's computers would have to go.
You got to take the hard drive.
Auditor's office. Or, yeah, I think because they're in charge of the IT program, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But I think Jim handles all the obsolete equipment and stuff. It goes through an auction process.
So they, they take the hard drive out and keep it here.
And then we have. We, we use Jake to advise us.
Okay.
He assesses what we can or cannot do.
Okay, thank you. I'll talk to you about it.
Sure.
I want to thank everybody for coming. I'll let Anthony and Dan have an opportunity to say a few things.
Maybe Melissa might want to talk about what's happening with the election.
Oh, God, I kept looking. I should ask.
You didn't get by, I'm sorry.
I know, I was like, oh.
What is it?
It's May 3rd. We're, we're moving full speed ahead with May 3rd. And any other information that's going to come out of the Secretary of State's office, as of today, it's May 3rd. So they're going to have two elections.
Well, that's not, that hasn't been, there, there isn't two elections currently.
Yeah, but they know, but right now, they have not redistrict those areas as of yet.
Didn't the line say it's May 3rd?
Yeah, the Secretary of State's office said it's May 3rd. We're preparing for May 3rd. We have our coworkers on the face for May 3rd. We have our equipment ready. We're ready to go for May 3rd.
And the state also, the state also provided an additional grant of 149,000.
They did provide primary grant funding because of the redistricting issues that may arise and we may need more money. So they gave us 143,000 and change for that. Yes.
They'll take way more than that. Tell them get the check.
That's what I told her.
Get their check.
That won't go very far.
Try about having three to.
That'll buy a dozen donuts for each location.
But we're ready to go regardless. Whatever comes out of the Secretary of State's office, we will be ready in Mahoney County to do what needs done.
Okay, thank you very much. Dave and Anthony, anything?
No.
I just want to thank Anna. You know, Anna's a, is somebody that knows every job in the Commissioners' office and, and there above. And she's very good at, at grant writing. She, she knows where the money is. She's just like Audrey. And Anna, I appreciate your hard work and getting that, that reimbursement back. Because usually that's hard to get, extract money back from the federal government, but it was well worth the time to do that for our community. And all of our agencies in here, Jeff and Randy, thank you for what you do. It's important, it's important that levy passes for children's services and that we help Jeff Magada and he continues to do what he does, you know, to help the community with those who can't help themselves as, as much as they wish they could. So we appreciate your program. And Alan, good for you. Welcome aboard again. Getting your feet wet. You look good. Still strong, standard. Great. So.
That's a little like he's beat up.
No. And we had a nice time at the Township Dinner last night.
We did.
At Alakart Catering, it was.
Tornado.
Yeah. Once again, Jody took my tickets that I bought for all the prizes and she gave me half. The other half she threw on the floor under the table. You know, I was the only one at our table, didn't win anything. Anthony won pots and pans and gifts and certificates. Anna won money. Everybody won money.
All right.
I'm telling you.
That's good.
It was, it was, I'll, I'll tell you that Alakart Catering, their, their food was amazing last night. It was really good.
Yeah, they had a good.
It was really good. You know, Anthony hit it right. You know, I, I look around this room and, you know, it's, it's, we're so fortunate as a county to have the people that are in here today, you know, as well as so many others. But, you know, and just look at the service in this room. I mean, from end to end, row to row, I mean, really, you know, inside the county and outside the county government, you know? When you talk, Marty Looney is such a, he's been a blessing helping us on the Port Authority and Labor and, you know, Jeff Magada. I have known Jeff Magada since the day I took office and I, well, before that, playing softball and baseball. But, you know, I've worked with Jeff on and off since 93. And, you know, what an amazing person he's been for his whole career. You know, juvenile diversion program, going right into his own business to help kids and help people involved in the Flying High. Amazing. You know, Randy, I, 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 I think the county has moved in such a great direction with you under children's services, you know, and, and the, the progress we've made, you know, as well as having to conform to all the state changes. You know, and, and the, the progress we've made, you know, as well as having to conform to all the state changes, mandates, you know, funding cuts, uh, we face funding cuts. I sing for my soapbox all the time, you know?
There we go.
But, but the media will come and say, you spent a hundred and twenty-seven thousand on this. And they'll write front page articles on it, but we lost another fourteen million dollars this year out of our budget from only sixty-seven million dollar budget because the state legislature took away the MCO funds. Fourteen million. Do you know that replaces the quarter percent sales tax that was put on to do all the roads, eight million a year? That replaces the nine-one-one system. It funds tho- those services, all those things that have just gone away because people go to Columbus and they get together and they take a vote, and nobody cares what they do down there. They come back here and nobody knows what they've done, you know, and, and, but, you know, and, and, but nobody ever focuses on it. When you add up the total money that the county has lost from the state cutting our budget, taking funds away and giving it to the state, we're over twenty million a year in the last ten years, twenty million a year. And i- it's just, i- it's despicable. You know, and, and every year we have to fill a hole before we balance the budget. And right now, you know, thank God, we got forty million dollars that came in because now there's no issues right now, you know? But, uh, and now the state's talking about saying, hey, let's roll back the gas tax and take money off Pat Giannetti. You know, because the federal government gave you money. You know, I, I mean, it, their, their line of reasoning is, is so warped, it's unbelievable. That's my soapbox. But thank all of you people in here for dealing with all the cuts and all the issues that you have to deal with and, and the, the ability to try to make everybody, you know, same.
And next.
Melissa and Chris, you two especially, you know, going through this with their lectures, so, thank you.
That's a tough deal when you have to, I know the board of elections, I was there.
We would like to say that we've had wonderful support from our community partners, including the Commissioners, Jim's office, the Auditor's office. We've had so much help and guidance and we've had a change of leadership, obviously, but as we go forward through this, we know we're going to have support, so we appreciate it so much.
Well, the elections, elections are what this country is made of. And it's sad, I mean, I shouldn't probably say this, but it's sad on the side of the Columbus people and the, and the legislators that they can't see through who they are. When they walk into the Capitol building, they become one for all of us. And I just can't get that through their thick heads. You become one of us. Let's just be fair. You know, we all have to do what we need to do when we run for elections or when they run, but you can't gerrymander things so that you, you just have the, the, the ability to do it and you do that. And that's not fair to, to anyone, the D's or the R's. It just is not fair. I mean, they need to be fair. They need to do things that benefit all the people, not just a certain small group. So I give you guys credit up there. I'd be like a crazy woman if I was there.
Be like one.
I really would, because I couldn't stand that thicket back and forth.
Here, when do we need it? They did, and they moved their meetings around the state. You know, well, we're going to have the next legislature meeting in Mahoney County. And it's court hours. Okay, yeah, that'd be cool.
You know, that's.
We go to Louisville, we go here, there.
Bring that up. That's a great idea.
Let them come and vote in our community and say, oh, yeah, we're going to let anybody in the United States carry guns in Ohio.
Center.
Yeah, really?
What do you think?
I, I'm looking for a story today, so.
That is good. What is wrong with that? Eighty-eight counties.
I'm getting legs.
And that, those are the people that could do it, the media. I think that's a great idea, Dave. We should write a letter.
Just make sure every vote's counted. I got a, I got a summons to go to jury duty next week.
Oh, boy. God bless.
I can pick a guilty person out a mile away. I'm going.
Anyway, um, thank you, everyone. Marty, thank you. How's everything at the board?
Everything's good. You know, Anthony took over, uh, Sean had retired here. Everything went well, had our first meeting here this past, past, uh, two week, a week ago. Moving forward, everything's really good stuff on the horizon here, so good trades wise, where everybody's working pretty good, so really good time to be right here in the valley, so we're good.
Thank God.
Yep.
We're doing well.
Yep.
All right. Anything else? No? We'll have a motion to adjourn.
Anthony has to make it. He's going first.
Hey, I gotta do what Nancy tells.
No, just.
Will you make the motion?
Nancy. We're all staying. Motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Dittler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.